Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the open session for the afternoon of Tuesday, November 4th, 2025. This is Chair Catherine Harrington. I'm joined by a full complement of district commissioners, which includes Vice Chair Commissioner Pam Trees, Commissioner Jerry Willie, Commissioner Nefisify, and Commissioner Jason Snyder. Thank you to staff from both of our agencies for your flexibility as we have accommodated a very busy day. So we will pick back up on topic number six, Washington County Quarterly Management Report.
Thank you, Chair, and for just as a check-in on the agenda this afternoon, we will be maintaining all items, but I will try to keep my quarterly update brief. In addition, the GR team will be efficient with their time with a goal of thirty to forty-five minutes for the county legislative agenda proposal. And then we have alerted the auditor to also be efficient too, so that should be less than thirty minutes. So with that, let me jump right into quarterly management report. And that is included in your packet. What I will do, just in the spirit of time, I will not be walking through the presentation today. Instead, I will direct all my comments to the actual report. So once again, I am pleased to share this latest quarterly management report. It's an opportunity to lift up some initiatives that you've heard of and some that you may not be aware of that are happening across the county. It is also important to recognize that with this quarterly management report, the county's work often comes with complex challenges, and this past quarter was no exception. As I have joked with employees, I am one to always lean into challenges or as I call opportunities. And right now, I would like a little less opportunities facing us. So I will turn to page three of the actual report itself and just walk through and provide some highlights. Within the supplemental budget, which your board had approved, just to further document the changes in the supplemental budget, those are listed within the quarterly management report. Part of the opportunity of doing that is not, our community doesn't always follow our budget, but this may be another source of looking at the complex challenges that we're facing. On page four is an overview of where we are with class and comp and working through getting to completion of our class and comp study process. As a reminder, this has multiple prongs to it. We have the prong of compliance with Oregon Pay Equity. Also, the county's first-ever creation of job descriptions, which we are working through getting to a goal of completion of that and updating and creation of a class and comp system for the first time in over twenty years here at Washington County. I do want to highlight, we have a clear project manager assigned to this project, Jennifer Kwan. Jennifer, as point of history, was the project manager that led to the website redesign project. So is very accustomed to working within a one-Washington County kind of process and system to get to a goal. So the project includes HR, communications, information technology, and our consultant HR answers to bring this project to a completion. We are, at this time, as I previously reported to the board, a two-year project timeline, which I know we all have desired to get this done before that point. However, we need to do this well. I will now turn the page to five. This is a highlight of our current artificial intelligence efforts. We, in summer of 2024, we surveyed the workforce on what could be helpful for you, because artificial intelligence is a very broad, broad area to explore. Also, we wanted to not make this a thing, but more embedded in the culture of how we do our work and increasing efficiency. So we have launched Grammarly AI, which helps real-time spelling grammar corrections. It integrates with Microsoft Outlooks, Teams, and other browsers. We also are launching Teams Premium Pilot, so that will help in staff meetings, meeting minutes, actually tracking, documenting action items. Upcoming, we will be launching Microsoft Teams Chat rollout, which brings in efficiencies to how we use chat. So this doesn't, one of the, I will call it falsehoods within the county workforce, within workforce in general, is that we will see a reduction in FTE as we roll out AI. Actually, from a county perspective, we are seeing this as the ability for staff to not have to do routine tasks and using higher and best use of their time. One question that was raised over the last couple of months was website ADA compliance as other jurisdictions are struggling with bringing their website into compliance. This was a focus when we launched the county's new website. I don't think I can call it new, because I think we're two years into the utilization, which that time has flown by. So we had taken that into consideration when we were developing the website. The current score from accessibility is nine point eight out of one hundred, which is great. We do have planned
Nine point eight.
Ninety-one point eight out of one hundred.
You said nine point eight.
That's sorry. It's two AM. Not PM. I apologize. So upcoming, Information Technology Services and the County Administration's Communication Team did meet actually a year ago to design the project for this fiscal year to ensure county websites achieve one hundred percent compliance. So I want to state that this is an example of us being a learning organization and having iterative processes that sometimes we may not be at a hundred percent, but then the next years you can use as building blocks. So that's really great that we will have compliance of ADA with our website and information for our community.
That caught my attention. What does that mean, ADA compliance? Like, the blind community can access our website, is that?
It's the readability of how documents are stored.
Not in terms of like the true meaning of ADA compliance, like, I don't
So there's ADA compliant, and let me provide that in a written follow-up of exactly like the detail of what that means. It is laid out in standards, though, of what we need to be compliant to. Does that mean that our website can be accessible to all site needs, to all languages? That's not what I'm saying, but I'll provide that as written update of exactly what that compliance standard is. Then, page six, starting with Community Corrections outlines the loss of state funding. And once again, wanted to document this just so that it is explicit of what this impact was. Eighteen full-time positions were eliminated within Community Corrections. The Counseling and Victim Services Division was closed. We ended our intern program, and the center's capacity was reduced by forty-eight beds. Here, support programs were scaled back and housing funds were cut. These eliminated positions affected all divisions, all levels within Community Corrections, from executive staff to line workers, along reductions in contracted services. These cuts have put considerable strain on local resources, prompting efforts to find operational relief, such as decreasing the downward dispositional departures and collaborating with courts and district attorney to review whether individuals being sentenced should go to prison instead of being placed on community supervision unless they are in a specialty court. Community Corrections has also, as a department, has implemented a hiring freeze on vacant positions through the end of this quarter and will reassess the situation starting next year. These are really tough challenges for the department to navigate with insufficient funding. I will also highlight that there could be potential additional cuts coming forward as the governor has directed departments to look at five percent funding reductions. The Sheriff's Office, with the support of your board, has continued to look at recruitment and retention. Within the Sheriff's Office, we are seeing that the Sheriff's Office is at fill rate, which is great news. You will see in your fiscal forecast coming to your board on Thursday, contemplation of reinstating the jail deputy positions. As you may recall, while we cut twenty-six positions within the Sheriff's Office, it was clear that once we got to those fill rates, that would need to come back to the board. We are seeing that fill rate within the jail deputies more so than on the patrol area. I want to commend the sheriff and just the partnership with all of us because in, from what I've seen in other jurisdictions, many times the elected sheriff can say, no, I will not give up those positions. And so I really appreciate just Sheriff Massey also not saying, I need all those positions now, and that will continue to work through this. On page seven, provide
I just make one comment before we move to page seven. The statistics down on the bottom of page six were probably, I mean, your words are really, really good. That was a very clear indicator of the steps and the progress we've made. That was, that was really eye-opening to me to see the numbers. Moving in a very good direction.
We are, we are. The Family Peace Center, the Family Peace Center is not a county department. However, this is, this is one of our community partners that we work closely with. As part of the changes to the Family Justice Center becoming the Family Peace Center, the District Attorney's Office does plan to relocate its domestic violence unit to this new building. The domestic violence unit, which includes prosecutors, victims, advocates, grant-funded investigators, and legal support staff, will be co-located with other essential services for victims and survivors. The Family Peace Center facility will also house grand jury and select court resources along with domestic violence investigators from various law enforcement agencies. Funding for the
That's a quick question. So does that mean that the DA's office and the other areas that are going to be having their FTEs there, do they pay rent to the Family Peace Center for that?
Yes, they will. Yep, yep. And so we are working in partnership with the Family Peace Center, and we're using salary savings to pay for the tenant improvements, to move personnel to the FPC. And this will be part of your spring supplemental budget process. We will include information on what that lease rate is. That lease rate is lower than what we're paying right now.
Great, thank you. But I want to make sure I understand. It says here, the District Attorney's Office is working in partnership with Facility Fleet and Parks for paying for the tenant improvements. But with regard to the lease payments now and into the future, was that done in collaboration with you?
Yes, yes. Erin Calvert has been working step by step with both FFMP, Facility Fleet Parks, and also the DA's office through this whole transition.
I just wanted to make sure that we had the opportunity of hearing.
Yep.
Thank you.
Land use and transportation, and I'm still on page seven. It includes just an update on Farmington Road Concept, as well as the TV Highway Transit and Safety Project. Many of these updates are included within your Friday facts as well. Moving on to Housing Health and Human Services, Behavioral Health, Care Oregon contract negotiations. As your board is aware, Care Oregon notified Health and Human Services in September that it will not be renewing its agreement with the Behavioral Health Division. This agreement totaled close to four million, provides Medicaid funding to support ongoing care coordination services for individuals with complex mental health and/or addiction issues who live in community. Additionally, the contract with Care Oregon, which funds jail care coordination, totals just over one hundred and eight thousand annually, will now not be renewed as well. As a reminder, Health, Share, and Care Oregon are making these tough decisions because the current Coordinated Care Organization, also the acronym that's commonly used as CCO rates, set by the Oregon Health Authority, can't support the services provided to members. So I want to be clear, this is the current rates. This is not related to federal Medicaid cuts. And the reason I want to underscore this is this is just the start of what we are going to be seeing of impacts to county services.
Can I ask a detailed question? And you may be getting to this, so it's okay for me to tell me to just pause it. You've communicated with us previously about Care Oregon and the funds for the jail care coordination that will not be renewed after the end of this calendar year. Will you be coming back to us? It would help me to, if you could come back to us and say, what will change with the jail? Because I'm making the assumption that we're still housing humans in the jail means we still have to provide care. It's just at least a matter of how do we pay for it? How do we achieve those requirements?
So let me turn to page nine of the report, and let me highlight an area. And if this doesn't meet your board's information needs, I can follow up in email, or we can come back. So I'm going to move to the second paragraph, led by Behavioral Health Division Manager Nico Kuhn and the Behavioral Health Program Supervisor Ian May. The team successfully reduced the number of positions needed to be cut from twenty to eight FTE across the following classifications. AS2 Program Coordinator and Senior Mental Health Service Coordinator. The two of these positions are currently vacant, and one employee recently gave their retirement notice. Consequently, five employees will be laid off to achieve this. Health and Human Services will, and this goes to kind of the actions. Leverage anticipated new contract revenue from the state aid and assist, jail diversion and civil commitment. This will be approximately one million in new revenue. Eliminate over four hundred thousand in contracts with service providers. These contracts support services for members receiving care coordination and can no longer be supported with the loss of revenue. Leverage approximately one million in unbudgeted interest revenue for a period of eighteen months to allow HHS to fully assess longer-term system impacts of these cuts. This does, the three bullet points, Chair, to your specific question on the jail, we will still be able to provide the jail services at this time for the jail behavioral health. I would take this as this whole section, though, and I wanted to take some time to really talk about, similar to Community Corrections. And you've heard me say I'm waving a flag. I'm waving the flag on what could still come within impacts to behavioral health.
The caution flag versus the red stop flag.
Yep, watch closely.
Yep.
So did that answer your question for now? Okay.
Thank you.
Also, within your packet, we have taken your board's
Summary of
Focus list and provided a status update.
Yep, yep.
So that concludes my quarterly update, and I'm happy to answer any questions or receive any feedback.
That was a great walkthrough, at least from, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, board members? Terrific, thank you very much, very helpful. Onward to topic number seven, 2026 Federal and State Legislative Agenda Proposal for Washington County First. Welcome to our team.
Thank you, Chair, and we will do our best to say fewer words and say them faster.
Faster, I'm not sure. Thirty AM.
Good afternoon, for your record, I am Erin Doyle, your Senior Government Relations Manager, and I'll have to tell me to introduce themselves now.
Harley Silva Gabrielson, Government Relations.
Zocker Khan, Government Relations.
Pablo Neves Valenzuela, Government Relations.
You can read the agenda, but I just wanted to point out some things. As you know, we are looking at a short session at the state level, and we are working to follow the board's direction around separating the county and Clean Water Services as two separate agencies. So we are going to bring forward to you all a county 2026 legislative agenda for both the state and federal level. So we are here by ourselves today, and we missed Tracy already.
Don't worry, she'll be right on her heels.
Exactly. So to the fact that the 2026 is a short session and that there's a lot of things going on at the federal level that we probably don't need to delve into further at this moment, we are proposing some really modest changes for the 2026 legislative agenda. And we will walk through that now with you, but these are the policy questions which are repeated throughout. This is just a reminder slide of the portfolios that each member of the team has. And we did note after we published that we got to update the name of the OEIC to reflect its new OAO status and that we accidentally left the General Counsel's Office because every one of us works with them. So we'll update that and republish with Kevin. I'm going to focus on the federal legislative agenda now. And as you may recall, and as you saw in the packet, the 2025 federal agenda, and historically, it's not a specific set of policy outcomes, but instead, we use principles to direct the work of our federal lobbying team. And so we are, again, focused on some smaller changes in this federal agenda. First, we are looking to remove the PAB from the agenda completely because, hey, mission accomplished, we've done a thing. This is a good outcome for the county and, but is no longer necessarily necessary for the agenda. However, we would like to replace that with something that your board has deeply invested in, the CDBG and home programs. So this is our recommended added language for the 2026 legislative agenda and moving forward into the future. And then finally, we wanted to recommend some amendments to reflect the work that the board has done in the equity and accessibility space, changing those references. And then in addition, on that third bullet point, bringing forward something your board has worked with LUT and myself on the J-PACT agenda to really highlight the fact that mid-sized transportation capital investments also need a path forward with federal funding, once we can access it. With that, hopefully not too fast, but are there further information needs that you have about the federal agenda, except for anything related to how the federal Congress works? Because I can't tell right now. But also asking your board if you support the proposed changes in the guiding principles for the 26 agenda.
I support the changes. I'm going to ask a dumb question.
There's no dumb questions.
What's a mid-sized transportation?
Currently, there are two grant programs in the transportation role, then one caps out at twenty-five million, and the next one doesn't pick up until a hundred million. So the mid-sized
There's a donut hole problem.
There's a donut hole, and we would like to see a grant program that fills that donut hole, which is when we brought back in the J-PACT agenda with Commissioner Fai advocating with us.
Can I ask, Alex, can Pablo borrow your mic so that
Yeah, thank you, Chair.
We were all thumbs up.
I got five thumbs up, I'm happy with that, and I'm going to turn it over to the rest of the team and not talk again.
So now we're going to talk about the state, and this is two-month session.
So it's a one-month, about five weeks, actually, to be specific. Yeah, before we get into that, I just want to do some quick background on sort of the fiscal environment that the state is looking at right now. So Oregon's economy, there have been some trends that are concerning, that impact state revenue. So for example, unemployment is a little bit higher. The economic growth has slowed down as well, but also passage of the big beautiful bill act, as it was called. Yes, HR1, right? That has some significant impacts on the state's budget because we have what's called a rolling reconnect law that essentially aligns our tax policy with federal tax policy. So some of those tax deductions also, you know, would impact revenues that the state is receiving as well. So as a result of those like economic changes, as well as the changes from HR1, as we call it, the state is facing about a seven to eight hundred million dollar shortfall in the state budget. And that's why, what were we hearing from legislators? What's that?
Tell me the number again, the shortfall.
So there's kind of a range right now, seven to eight hundred million that folks are talking about, yeah. So, and yes, yes. And so what we're hearing from legislators as a result is, you know, new investments, new programs are pretty much off the table. Nobody's, you know, going to be proposing things like that and being successful, at least from what we're hearing, right? So with that being said, I think we can move into the next slide. So the state legislative agenda, the structure of it remains the same. Guiding principles, of course, those help us navigate conversations with legislators about a whole range of policy issues that are before them. We have our core priorities, right? These are the things that the GR team is putting the bulk of our time and energy into. We also have some county service-specific guiding principles, and those help us navigate conversations that are more specific to our respective departments and portfolios. And in terms of guiding principles, the only thing that we plan to change is, similar to what Erin was discussing earlier, just aligning this guiding principle with the work that we've done to federal line with federal guidance that we've received. So just simply replacing one word with accessible here. Looking at our priorities, as you can see here, we actually haven't changed these priorities. We feel like even though the state is struggling financially, we don't want to, you know, our needs are the same, right? We still want full funding for community corrections, for A and T operations. We still want to have timber revenue restored from the state, right? So we don't feel like because of the climate, that's a need to, you know, change what our needs are because they simply haven't.
We're not going to let her put out the gas.
Exactly, right.
Could I express an information need offline? Follow-up with the full board by email is perfect. I'm a little bit confused by recent state. I don't know that it's action proclamations or otherwise, but there was something that I saw that the administration has take action to open up the whole forestry agreements again. And so I just need a clarified statement on what the situation really is. That's all.
It's a good question. Yeah, I'll be happy to follow up about that.
Yeah, and some of that conversation is going to be at the FPLAC next meeting. Unfortunately, that is the same day as Clean Water Services holiday, so I cannot attend that. But some interesting conversations can be had. I'll get the agenda for that so that you can see that. But yes, there's some interesting conversations being held with
And you look into, I'm not asking you to do it, but look into seeing if one of potentially our representatives or members of your staff that one may attend to get a report out through government relations from that. And then the other thing we have to follow up with is, I know I'm not traveling to Eugene for the AOC business date. So while you're away that week, we have to figure out who from the Washington County Board is going to participate in that annual day.
Yeah, I thought Jason had already agreed to attend that shift.
Thank you for reminding me then.
And we just need to, at some point in time, I talked to Pablo about this just a little bit ago, authorize him to, he gets my vote, so. And I don't even know if we have to
You never did authorize me before.
I think, no. That's you.
Is that just because I'm the chair? And when
No, actually, I think it's just any commissioner who sits at the table and represent Washington County.
Yeah.
And it doesn't have to be me or any authorized person, so Jason's going to be
We gave a thumbs up to that in a prior meeting, I just forgot about it.
Yeah, so, so.
You're hereby authorized.
And as far as the attendance at FTLAC meeting, you know, Brandon, the AOC lobbyist for forestry and a bunch of other things, I talked to him the other day because I was asking him about, should we leave this on our priorities? He recommended that we do and that it's in their charter. So the AOC doesn't get any wiggle room as to whether or not their charter is to lobby for timber money for the counties. So I think we've got that covered, and the recommendation is to leave that in So, so I think we've got that covered and the recommendation is to leave that in place. And then we can get certainly get an update on how that meeting goes on Friday.
I was already there because I stood by what Pablo was saying.
Thank you. I think that's all I have for this slide, so I'll go ahead and pass it off to Zucker.
With the economic headwinds that Pablo just briefly noted, we want to retain the language that we used in the previous legislative session to keep having advancements on workforce development.
So continuing our effort.
Yes. The next slide is in relation to Health and Human Services with the passage of Senate Bill 916, which we developed as a county. We are removing this language about funding formulas, which are not slated to be due up for an update for several years from now. And also because our legislation passed, we're removing that provision just to make the agenda much simpler. And then we're adding language or amending language to add the words retaining because we really want to show within the agenda how important it is to sustain the services we're already providing. And with that, I'll turn it over to Carly.
Thank you, Soccer. We have updated the housing and homelessness priorities to emphasize a focus on maintaining stable funding for housing solutions and affordable housing development, while also addressing emergency and long-term rent assistance, rehabilitation investments and operational stabilization. The amendments appear in bold on the slide for further review.
What do, what might, and this maybe isn't a question for today, but on the housing and homeless principles, given the state of affairs, I don't know how I would recognize stabilized low income residents given that the state 2025 session destabilized emergency renters. So that's all. I'm just not quite sure how we're asking our legislators. Room for me to learn more.
I'll follow up on that note, Chair, but certainly increased funding for those communities that are in most need. And then on the next slide, land use and transportation. We updated the principles to add new language affirming the county's opposition to any new legislative mandates that do not provide adequate time and funding for local governments to implement effectively. This update responds to the numerous statutory changes that have occurred in recent legislative sessions, many of them that are still being implemented and that we don't yet know the results of. So we do believe that it's very important to fully evaluate whether the code changes that have already occurred achieve their intended goals before adding further mandates.
Is there a reason why we have that point limited to land use and transportation principles?
Yes, the same question.
It seems to me that that might be a good theme for the whole agenda.
Thank you for that feedback, Commissioner. I think we could strengthen some of the language in our guiding principles. And this really is just calling upon the fact that our great planning staff and land use and transportation have been so overworked, but that.
I understand why it's in this space. I think the point broadly applies.
In the overall county guiding principles, the number one principle is no unfunded mandates, which is perhaps a more succinct version of this added principle. But in this, in the housing space, I think it needs to be especially called out.
And the time part matters too.
Yes.
Well, I could just follow on what we said there. The, shouldn't we have that, as you put it, the overall overarching theme is stop doing that?
Still do it.
And they still do it, but I mean, still, I was just looking for it in here. It's really not in here till we get to this part. And so could we make it? Couldn't we make an overall?
As she said, it's already in there, but for the purposes of this presentation, they didn't give us the whole laundry list.
So when we go over this again, when we're closer to a finalized product in December, we will make sure that we highlight where these sit. And if there is language adjustment based on this conversation, if that's what the board would like to direct us to do, we have time to make those changes on that guiding principles as well. So if that's the direction of the board, we will work on that.
I, I think what the team is trying to do, sometimes you need to hear a message seven times, seven different ways for it to resonate. So while this is one of, this is the primary guiding principle. This is about embedding it throughout the legislative agenda so that hopefully it will be heard seven times, seven different ways and it can resonate differently.
I mean, I'd like to see almost like a sentence that comes after this in a broader part that's in all caps and bold and says, just don't do it or stop it or something like that. That's as catchy as a Nike slogan.
We'll save that for the one pager.
Well, I was encouraged still with some of the open remarks that said, no new initiatives, no spending and you're going, when's it, when's the last time we heard that and they actually did that through a session? But that would be one of the first hopes that they would maintain status quo at least and do something.
Commissioner, I'll just comment on that really briefly. The co-chairs held a briefing for all of the lobbyists and they really emphasized the point that you just mentioned. Do not ask for anything new in this upcoming session. We do not have the finances to.
Please stop the bleeding. Please stop draining us of our blood.
Well, they said that to the lobbyists, but do they say it to their legislators?
Well, we'll have to inquire.
You know, we're, I understand this, but one of my concerns as we, as we look at this incredibly tight budget that the state is facing, I want to make sure that we are not only saying no more mandates, but no more cost shifting. No, because that's, that's really what I'm worried about here too.
More cost cutting than promises you already made.
Right, or cost shifting as well, so.
Thank you for that, Commissioners. And with that, we turn back to our four policy questions on the state agendas. So Chair Harrington, I will hand it back to you to facilitate the board conversation. Thank you.
Okay, so one last round for each of the Commissioners. Who would like to go first?
I'll go first. Let's go to slide 12. I heard economic development in the conversation here. I heard increased unemployment. Conversations that I am hearing from the, basically from the private sector is that the county and the cities need to have a stronger economic development department, program, policy. And if you look at ours, we really don't have. And I think where we need to be going is because we have here in this one, it says, obtain investment for development of our workforce to meet county staffing and community needs across all departments. But if we don't have jobs, then workforce development doesn't really work very well. And then the second one, of course, obtain tools to help Oregonian, Oregon gain a competitive advantage in hiring nationally. We could tag something along there. I just want to put a little bit more meat on the bone here that we as a county could focus on a stronger economic development focus from the state. Because the, the state doesn't have one that's really very good right now. We're not very business.
We're not even competitive, let alone competitive advantage.
No.
We're having the wrong, I don't think we are accepting where we are and.
That's about the higher.
Well, and this doesn't have to cost, doesn't have to cost us any money, might cost us a little bit of time. But from the state and the state is the same thing. I mean, it doesn't cost them any money. They just need to embrace a stronger economic development policy. And I don't know how we communicate to that to them, but I'd like us to at least try that.
And along those lines, we're aware that there could be potential bills coming forward to strengthen the land use focus, to strengthen incentive focus, those types of things. And I just want to make sure that we are positioned here to, to support that as well.
I'll respond to that since I have the pleasure of having that in my portfolio. You know, typically the board has been very supportive of the state's focus on expanding economic investment because it is so tied to job creation and obviously affordable housing and achieving our infrastructure and transportation goals. There does seem to be renewed focus of some members of the legislature to really heavily look at this in the 26 and 27 session. So I think it's going to be critical for us to be involved, especially with our local government partners and community-based organizations as this conversation advances, but also be protective to ensure that county resources and staff time are not a part of the state's solution to this. So I think we'll need to be very good partners while ensuring that, that Washington County does benefit from those investments.
Yeah, I just want, if this is our guiding principles, I just don't want to, if there is an opportunity to support something like that, I want us to say, yep, that's within our purview and we can do that.
Thank you, Commissioner Riley. We'll, we'll explore if there's additional language needed to add to the agenda.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm interested to listen. Thank you, Chair. I don't really, to answer your questions here, I don't have any further informational needs. And now that I know this session is one month, it sounds like you have your workout out. And hopefully it's, there's not going to be as many bills as the last session to track or even half of it. And to that point, I'm wondering if you know, is there a limit to, since it's just one month? Is it, every legislator just gets two bills assigned and that's it? Okay, I see now. Okay, well, then maybe you're, you're, you're on full force and hopefully you can deliver all this. I am in support in terms of the changes that you presented. I'm also in support of carrying forward the 2025 principles as laid out and support the last bullet point as well, so. May the force be with you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Anyone else?
I'll just briefly say that I agree with Commissioner Willie's comments about economic development and really the fact that the state, I mean, I just think more broadly, not just on workforce, but we're, we as a state have been, and not just the state, but everybody in the state, we've not been focused with our eye on the ball from my perspective on that and the way that we need to be to be competitive and how exactly we message the fact that we recognize that and we want them to engage in helping to address it. Maybe what Commissioner Willie said is adequate, but I would just take that one step further back a little bit and say, we gotta, we have to get in the game. And I don't, I don't think we're, not only do we not have a competitive advantage in that space and I realize that slide was not, that was about workforce, but we're not even competitive, let alone an advantage. Like, we just have to be honest with ourselves and figure out how to address that meaningfully. And I don't, I don't think that's an optional experience from the state's perspective. Like, whether they want to spend money or not, I don't even know if they need to spend money, but they got to change, they got to change their identity. We all have to change our identity around that.
Thank you for that feedback.
That's my only.
As I said earlier, my comment is around economic development in an incomes tax driven state. We need the jobs. We need to be able to provide statewide, not just in Washington County. We need to provide these for a better, a better opportunity in recruitment and we need to focus on retention as well.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I have two concerns beyond what has already been said. I'll start with Commissioner Willie, if I heard you correctly, and I may not have. What I thought I heard was legislators are saying that counties and cities have to have stronger ECTV.
No, I said, I said that we need to have that, not legislators, but. I think our legislators need to get on the, get in the game with us. But counties and cities would probably drive it because our state hasn't.
Well, and that's, I'm not pushing back on you. I'm pushing back on the state.
Yeah, okay.
Doesn't matter what more we do. We weighed in pretty heavily on state actions all the way through the end of 2024. And then we weighed in in wanting, in 2025, wanting a improved transportation bill. So I think we've been there. This is a different moment in time, so we need the state to get things done and to know that if they are going to focus, that we can be a good partner for them in that. But it doesn't mean we just need to throw more bodies at ECTV. So that's what I wanted to share there. My other issue is I'm concerned that our state legislators will balance the state budget by cutting funding from services directed by state agencies that are delivered by county government. And they need to own it. We can support that because we all need to make sure we have balanced budgets and we can totally relate to that. But they need to do it with their eyes wide open and as partners to county government. That's all. Yeah, it's hard. We know that. But beyond that, I'm fine with everything presented.
Don't use our money to backfill your budget hole.
We don't have the money to backfill their budget hole or their budget cut, so, yeah. Are there, is there anything in particular you want to identify on the calendar?
Yeah, yes, Commissioners, yes. The upcoming revenue forecasts are going to be really critical for what budget outlook is going to be looking like. So the next one is on the 19th. We have a couple more, two more sets of legislative days. And then the final sort of revenue forecast is during session on February 4th. And you can see the calendar for, for when those are going to be coming up in the upcoming months. But those will be really critical and Pablo will be providing updates to the board on those revenue forecasts.
And the revenue forecast comes out on the 19th and we'll, we'll be able to see it that, that very day.
Yes.
And if I made the other key here is we will be back beginning of next month. We will take all of this information that you provided and work on making adjustments to the language and seeing how we can work things in either as additional priorities, changes to the principles per this conversation. We appreciate the feedback from the board and you'll see that on December 2nd. And then we will be back for adoption of the final agendas for 2026 on the 16th.
Okay.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Just about the good work. The thing to do is.
Thank you, Chief.
Not easy. And now we're going to do something similar, but for our other agency, Clean Water Services. So Rick and Tracy Rainey.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Board. Tracy Rainey, Government Relations Manager for Clean Water Services. I appreciate this opportunity to present to you today. And let me make sure I have got full power of advancing slides. And I do, okay. Over the past few months, we have been working with our internal staff from various departments to review our 2025 priorities and principles and to make any suggested revisions to those current priorities and principles, which is reflected in today's conversation. Today I'll review both the federal and state legislative agendas are really the principles and priorities that make up those agendas. And I will highlight, similar to what you just heard from your county GR team, where the changes have been made from our 2025 agendas. As I mentioned, the purpose of today's discussion is to get your feedback, including the specific policy questions that we've outlined on this slide, whether you need additional information, whether you have suggested modifications. And then of course, if there are any additional legislative issues that you would like us to explore as potential priorities or areas that you would just like to learn more about. Okay, so moving into our proposed 2026 federal legislative agenda and the federal guiding principles, we have four guiding. We have four guiding principles. So the first two are on this slide and then there's two remaining on the next slide. Many of these may look familiar. The guiding principles don't tend to change as frequently year to year. They're intended to capture ongoing areas where we do more frequently engage in advocacy. Whether that engagement is direct between Clean Water Services and our federal delegation or federal agencies, or whether the advocacy is done in coordination with national associations such as National Association Clean Water Agencies or Water Reuse Association that we frequently coordinate with. So the first item on here, you'll see, supporting continued and expanded federal investments for grants, low-interest loan programs with principles forgiveness for water-related infrastructure. We have modified this very just a simple wording on continued instead of ongoing, which was in 2025. But we did add language to oppose cuts to critical funding sources, particularly the Clean Water State Revolving Fund is one that we are watching very closely. On our next proposed guiding principle, supporting initiatives including funding assistance and integrated planning approaches to promote the long-term resilience, efficiency, effectiveness and safety of water utilities and infrastructure is not changed from 2025 and really reflects conversations around how permitting is done for the Clean Water Act and whether there are any efficiencies that may be gained in that. Okay, so unless there's questions on the prior slide, I'll keep moving forward. No changes have been proposed around our support for in investments for local conservation technical assistance programs. There is a priority that's a little bit more specific that you'll see in the coming slides at the federal level that is around a more specific program that does not have adequate funding at this time. So we will talk about that. And then this is unchanged for 2025. That last one on the slide is around strategies to better understand and respond to arising challenges, including impacts from emerging pollutants and climate-related events. Again, no changes to that guiding principle.
I would like to just ask a question, but it's one I don't need follow-up on today.
Okay.
Okay. I appreciate our guiding principles. And I don't know if it's just that we now have the separate accounts for our two different agencies and NACWA is doing a better job in pumping emails out or if it's as a result of the new administration and reflective of activity. But there are a lot of emails from NACWA, sometimes multiple times during a week. And when I see them, what I have relied on, but I don't know that I've ever said, is that they'll have ones that have called to action, you know, send a comment letter on EPA, this, that, and the other thing. And I just needed, maybe I just needed to repeat it here, that if there's something that you need us as a board to weigh in on, that you'll let us know. Otherwise, I continue to be totally comfortable that you've got it right and we're going to keep moving forward.
Yeah, absolutely, Chair. Well, Rick, I won't interrupt.
But if anything, some changes in the future, please just let us know.
We certainly will, absolutely. I get those frequent emails as well and we'll let you know if there's one that rises to that level.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving into the more specific proposed federal legislative priorities. No surprise here, the top of the list is around Skoggan St. So advancing structural seismic modifications for Skoggan St. to effectively reduce risk from a cascade of subductions on event and opposing reductions in stored water capacity. This has been modified to reflect recent conversations we've had with you all, changes that we have learned from reclamation about the scope of the project. We continue to work with the local partners in the recent Long Valley Irrigation District and Joint Water Commission. And we will be coming to you with an update in the months ahead around kind of what that joint advocacy strategy looks like. We have no changes proposed around our priority to advance water reuse opportunities. And no, just a minor change around the low-income water repair assistance program. We did not have the word low income before, so that was flagged and I agree that that was a good addition there. And really what we're looking for is to make that program that was initiated during COVID a permanent program. I don't think the likelihood is there at this time, but we will continue to sound the alarm about the need that is associated with that.
I get what you asked for.
It's the long game right now. Okay, moving to our additional federal legislative priorities. We will continue to support funding to make sure that we are adequately managing Wapato Lake National Wildlife Refuge. That is a specific maintenance and operations account that we will be watching closely and communicating with the refuge manager to make sure that we're not seeing cuts there. And then, so as I mentioned before, supporting funding for agricultural conservation incentives and programs. We are aware that the Conservation Reserve Enhancement Program, which provides funding to farmers for trees that they will plant on their property, that has not been adequately funded and is something that was left out in the recent reconciliation bill. So we will be having those conversations about making sure that those funds, if there's a chance to reinstate those funds, that that is done.
Now, this may sound silly or reflective of the middle of the afternoon, but on the first-ledge priority on this slide, with regard to the Wapato Lake National Wildlife Refuge, I had to remind myself that this is for the benefit of the Twelton River, the health of the Twelton.
Absolutely, Chair. And I know there's an
I bet the document has that, or, but the bullet here, I had to remind myself, so.
And I, yes, thank you for mentioning that. We will have a narrative that does accompany these priorities. And we'll speak to that, including the history, a little bit of the water quality impacts that can, can be associated with that effective management.
Thank you. This is effective for the presentation, not a problem.
Okay, great. Okay, and then the final one on this slide. Of advocating for policies, regulations are protective of the environment and human health from exposure to emerging contaminants. And then working to ensure producer responsibility to protect utility ratepayers.
This is PFAS.
Largely PFAS, but there are others as well. So we want to make sure it's broad enough to capture the, the range. Okay, if we're ready, we can move into the state legislative agenda then. As similar to our federal guiding principle, this principle on the screen is intended to be broader to capture those things that we may come across. But we did modify it just very slightly to add the word effectiveness. There was just a conversation that we've got efficiency in there, but we didn't have effective. And we want to make sure, again, these policies are effective in promoting that economic vitality and quality of life in the region. So we'll move then into our state legislative priorities. We have no change from 2025 around our priority to support infrastructure, water-related infrastructure investments. We are aware that the state septic loan program did not get funding at the end of the legislative session. It was, I, I think, just not adequately prioritized and maybe not understood in terms of the impact it has statewide, including in urban areas. So we are having that conversation with legislators in the coalition that is working to support that.
The state view that type of thing as an actual expense? To me, a, a loan fund that's being repaid should fundamentally be viewed to me, that's not spending money in the long run. Is that how that's viewed? Or are they, do they not think of it in that way?
That's a really great question. I, I don't think that they do think of it in that way necessarily. I would need to look at that particular fund. It might not revolve as quickly, maybe as some, because it is not. I think the loan terms, again, being for low-income households. They may not see the, it's not self-sustaining. So I will say that. So they
There is expense to it.
There is some expense there, yeah. Any further questions on that one?
But the, the problem is urban residents who don't have the funds are going to continue to use a failing septic system, which hurts the environment. So that's what we're trying to get the legislators to understand. Someone gets hurt.
Absolutely. And I, I should note that that program does support connection to sewer if it is available to that resident. So, which also has a cost associated. The next priority, ensuring sufficient funding service levels for DEQ. No change here, aside from just us noting that we are really going to need to be engaging. As you heard and as you know, agencies have been asked to submit the 5% cuts list. So we are working with DEQ, taking a look at what is on the proposed cuts list and trying to avoid as much impact as we can, really. And it'll be the tip of the iceberg, I'm sure. Continuing to work with DEQ to update and implement Oregon's regulatory framework for water reuse. We did add the word continue, continue to work on this because that does reflect that we did have another win in the 2025 legislative session with a passage of a bill that made the water reuse coordinator position permanent for DEQ. Though we'll be watching in the cuts list, make sure that we don't lose that. And the inter-agency coordination work that was funded during the 2025 legislative session. So it really becomes more of an administrative conversation with DEQ rather than legislative funding conversation. Supporting policies to promote water or resource recovery, that has no change from 2025. There was an industrial symbiosis bill that Representative Helm had introduced last session and we were engaged in that conversation. I'm not sure if that will continue, but if it, if it does, we will be there to be helpful and supportive.
Did consciously not pass or did it not get addressed due to time and deadlines?
That's a great question, Chair. I do, I, I really think it was just the competitive nature of funding requests this session. They tried to have it as a pilot program to see if they could
Oh.
get over that hurdle of something new. And I just think it was a tough session.
And the Water Caucus is still in place.
Yes, yes, the Water Caucus is, is still
Even if Helm isn't there.
I'm not ready to talk about that.
I know.
Yes, for those that are not aware, Representative Kent
It is the rehab.
Katirene, and he's just such a great go-to on water policy. Our last item on this screen is preserving local infrastructure financing tools for water infrastructure, largely intended to capture SDCs, but also any conversation around water sewer rates as well. And we are, I think, close, close to the end here. Advocating to ensure that policies, regulations relating to emerging contaminants are protective of the environment and public health, informed by sound data and science and reflective of a producer responsibility model to protect utility ratepayers. This is very similar to what you heard from the federal legislative agenda. But this was modified to reflect that a bill passed during the 2025 legislative session to fund biosolids studies statewide to take a look at the occurrence prevalence fate transportation of PFAS in biosolids. So that was a huge lift. That was a huge effort from a big coalition and we were supportive of that effort. So we are now moving really into, I think, an area where we're not working on anything proactively, but watching to see what comes before legislature. Okay, I thought we were done. We have two more. And this one's really, really important and I'm excited about this one. So water workforce, we, again, actually, this is broader priority around utility. You'll see efficiency, resiliency, responsiveness, including elevating our water workforce needs. We know everyone's got workforce challenges. But we are having some conversations with some other local government associations, the League of Oregon Cities, Special Districts Association, around a proposal to potentially a resolution to just recognize Oregon's water workforce for the critical work they do. Give them a hearing and actually elevate this conversation to get, get people thinking about it. So we're excited about that potential. And then the last one on here is supporting funding opportunities and efficiencies and policies that promote housing production while ensuring protection of water quality and public health. So ongoing housing conversation. So Chair, I don't know if you would like me to turn it over to you for board discussion, board questions. But that does cover all of them.
So who would like to go first? Who will first and say thumbs up?
Fantastic, great. Thank you. Appreciate that.
I covered my questions and comments during the slides.
I, I don't have any problem. I just worry about the length of the list a little bit. So that's, that's, you know, but they are priorities. So it's not as though they're, their priority is not, we're going to go after this.
For the state or federal or both or?
Mostly for the state. With the short session, but that's, I still think we're talking about, I had to remind myself that we're talking about what are our priorities, not necessarily individual approaches.
So I appreciate that comment. Don't disagree with you and I, but I do, I, yes, I, when I thought about a little bit, I, I agree. And I think we're on the same page in that regard that this is, a lot of it's messaging, a lot of it's trying to elevate the needs and the issues. We may not see action on all these things in the short session.
And there, when I look back, it's not like I would take one off. So.
That's great. Thank you.
I think, Rick, in the presentation that you guys are making with the city councils, I've seen two of them now. You talk a lot about the permitting timelines. We're in the process of, for the renewal and you've, you've laid all that out. Those are, those are with state agencies, right?
Those are state, yeah.
Yeah, that's correct. So I think I didn't necessarily see something in our legislative priorities that would say, don't change the rules, don't raise the standards for our permitting process. I don't know if any of that is out there in conversation, but it seems like, it seems like not only are we needing, we are requiring to meet different kinds of permitting issues in the water, cleaning up the water. But they also lower, I guess if you want to say that, lower the tolerance that we have to deal with as well. So is any of that coming down the pike that you're hearing? Or are we, are we pretty good on this?
To, some of the items are like PFAS that was mentioned, you know, that is at, that is at the larger federal level. That could be impacted to the, how the states implement some of those types of rules. A lot of the things that we talk about are more specific to the, the district's clean water services permit itself. So we're working with DEQ directly to make changes to our permitting requirements within the, within the context of the rules. And some of them do impact like recycled water, where we want to add more water potentially than what the current DEQ rules allow. We work with them directly. We do pilot work and some of those types of things to advance the knowledge that needs to be there to make changes that can then get broadly adopted.
So our success resides more with the agency rather than the legislature?
Well, if I, yeah, I was going to say, yeah, Chair, Chair, Willie, I, that's, I think, where that funding and protecting DEQ resources piece comes in, is making sure that we're looking out for the water quality permitting program very specifically, including both permit writers as well as those that are developing the water quality standards that feed into those permits and making sure that they're thoughtful and attainable and cost-effective and producing good water quality outcomes. So that's, that's where I think the bulk of that work is going to happen in the budget conversations, avoiding, if we can.
Thank you. As for me, I'm fine with the state guiding principles and priorities. I do have concerns all through calendar year 26 about the federal mantra, whether it's the president, this Congress or Congress itself, or the department, federal department agencies with this mantra of dismantle, dismantle, dismantle. And would I change, ask you to change anything? Absolutely not. It really goes to, I think, what you've got is strong and just keep going. On the state level, first, I need a reminder of when, you just went over this with us at the October round or work session day. Whatever day of the week that was. I know it was a Friday, but was it the 10th? Was it the 7th? Don't ask me the date. But I know you told us when the permit, current permit expires and how long it takes them to process a new permit application, right? Your mileage may vary, but I can't remember. Does the current permit expire the end of '27, I think? Okay, so to the state, with regard to clean water services, I think about moving forward and not with regard to clean water services, I think about moving forward and not backwards. You know, listening to the interchange, it got me to think about, don't change the rules. You know, the pilots that they're, they funded through the 20, even through the 25-long session is being impactful potentially for our next permit and laying the groundwork for the one after that. So making sure our current Washington County delegation knows that the wants and needs that you've articulated here are important for the good water quality outcome, which benefits our residents, our businesses, and our industry here. And they better understand how the work of DEQ is required for success. Otherwise, those, you know, a 5% budget cut from DEQ could put things at risk. Particularly for the water reuse strategy, so on and so forth, so.
That's one of the questions. I just thought she triggered something.
Yeah.
We've talked about renewable natural gas. Is there any federal or state guidelines in there that are making our conversations difficult? So in other words.
Or could they undo something that we?
Are you saying it's the regulation that's making it harder, more?
We've been, we've been talking about this for three years. And, and I'd really like us to, you know, get something across the finish line here. Is, is that just because of the, is that regulatory, or is that government policies, or what is it?
That's a great question. I think maybe we could do follow-up on that and check in with our staff. I think it's, it is a host of challenges. It's trying to pencil things out, you know, it's kind of the common terminology of it and making it work.
Yeah, I realize there's, there's a lot of pieces.
The incentive kind of pieces to it, as well as just getting the project planned for, designed, and knowing a certainty in kind of the markets as well. So we can follow up certainly on that and what our staff is.
I think goes back to my point about moving forward, not backwards. They may be trying to solve a budget problem, but that would take us backwards. And what does it mean to take us backwards? They need to know that. And I support your making sure they know that.
Well, we will rely on the board as well to help us carry that message, and we will be in communication, let you know when those opportunities arise.
Okay.
Terrific. Good, good job. Thank you very much. Okay, board, here we are at 3:25. Would you like to take a break before our last two topic items?
Given the topics, I would suggest we try to push forward, but.
Yeah, I just need some more water.
Okay, why don't we take a five-minute break for that? Okay, we'll start up at 3:30 on topic nine. Thank you.
All right, welcome back, Commissioners, and back to you, Jarrett.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. And I just want to note for Commissioners' benefit, we have three time-sensitive emails in our inbox. One is from Philip with regard to elections this evening. He's asked us to get back to him before the end of today's workday. So that you'll need to look at. Then the other two, we've all received surveys for our county council and our county administrator. Those are due by Friday, November 20th or 21st, whatever that date is. Thank you. In the month of November. Doesn't see my smile. So, okay, without further ado, we will switch over to topic number nine with our elected county auditor, Christine Adams-Wanberg, on county charter language change requests from the county auditor.
All right, thanks very much. And I very much hope that the levees pass today. I'm, I'm going to be watching tonight as well, so. Again, for the record, my name's Christine Adams-Wanberg. I am the county auditor. Over the last several months, I've had a chance to meet with each one of you and to discuss some charter changes that I think are appropriate. These are to the auditor sections of the county charter. And I'm going to do just a super short presentation of what those changes are. I'm going to give you just a little overview. I'm also going to highlight where there are, where we are a little bit different than some of our regional auditors, or even maybe the state, and discuss hopefully getting the board's support for putting this on the May 26 ballot. Okay, the first one, and there are three here. One is eliminating the certified government auditing professional as a qualification to run for auditor. There are two other certifications that are currently in the charter, that being the certified public accountant and a certified internal auditor. The thing with the certified government auditing professional is that this particular designation has been phased out by the Institute of Internal Auditors basically in December of 2018. Those folks who have the C-GAP, for example, I have both a certified internal auditor designation as well as the C-GAP. Those folks with the C-GAP have been grandfathered and still have that designation as long as we maintain our continuing professional education requirements. Just for reference, there are only 23 C-GAPs in Oregon, so it's not a lot. And most of those happen to be in Multnomah County and Marion County. We only probably have a handful, maybe, maybe six here in this particular county, so it's not a lot. It also would align us by taking that out. We'd be a little bit closer to the designations for the other regional elected auditors, such as Multnomah County, City of Portland, and Metro.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, sure.
So if you go back, does that mean that those eight people, if we were to follow this, that those eight people, if that's the only designation that they could have, could not run for county auditor?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to make, okay, but that, okay, got it.
Nope, you got it, you got it right on, right on.
How hard would it be for them to either also be certified as CPAs or certified internal auditors?
It would definitely take more work. So certified public accountant, obviously, you'd have to go through your state board of accountancy. That has a lot of education, as well as, from what, from what I hear, quite a, quite a bit of testing. The certified internal auditor is also, it's a more rigorous certification than the C-GAP. So it requires a lot of study, it requires a lot of review and several tests as well. The C-GAP only required one test. I will tell you that when I took that test, even though it is to be a government auditing professional, the focus of the test was more on what I would say the private sector thought that government auditors should do, because the Institute of Internal Auditors is much more private sector focused. I don't think, I would not say that the C-GAP is as rigorous certification as the other two.
Yeah, just to give you a comparison, a CPA, to the CPA designation, you have to take the exam, obviously. And it covers tax as well as auditing, as well as accounting theory. So it's a much broader scope, whereas a certified internal auditor would probably, I don't have that, never did that, didn't care. But that seemed, would seem to me to be a much more narrow scope of certification requirements.
And then the C-GAP, would it be even more narrow?
I've never heard of C-GAP, so I can't even respond to that.
Okay.
Well, I'm just on the lookout for when these changes would come into effect and how they would disqualify potential candidates from running in the next election with enough lead time to earn the other credentials in time.
Any other questions on that? Okay. All right, the second revision that I'm asking for is actually to change the residency requirement for the county auditor. Currently in the charter, it's a minimum of six months before the person takes office. That's very different than what the county commissioners and the sheriff have, which is two years. I'm not really sure why there's, it's six months. It seems very, very short to me. So in theory, somebody could come in, they could run for auditor, they could be an auditor, that's fine. But they wouldn't even have to be a resident of the county unless it was the July before they took office. That seems very odd to me. If you look at the other elected auditors, the minimum time is 12 months. And then I think for Multnomah County, and then one of the other jurisdictions, it is 18 months. So I'm asking basically to align what we have currently with what the Board of Commissioners has and the sheriff.
To refresh my memory, do you run for office in May or November?
I run in May of 2026.
So theoretically, they wouldn't even have to be a resident to run for office.
That's correct.
They just had to be moved here by June 30th.
Right.
Well, that's a problem.
Little bit.
What is it for legislators? Do we know? One year for state legislators? I don't know why they're not all aligned to just be one year for everybody, state on down through all the locals. I think our constituents would be better served for that alignment.
Be less confusing.
For run for mayor, how long did, what was your term? I had to be, I had to be President Hillsborough one year before the election. And that was a November election, so.
So the tiger charters changed now, but it was a one-year, a one-year requirement, but it was not related to the day of the election. It was like a, it said one year of residency, which would have probably applied before you could file. Is how it would have been administered.
So I, another question. Do we have any information as to why it was originally established as six months versus two years, number one? And number two, the other, the other issue that just bubbled up for me is the difference between your office being much more inward-looking, that the purpose is to look at the county functioning internally versus ours is to be looking more at the community at large. So that's, that was just an issue that came up to me as far as perhaps that was one of the considerations when that was put together.
Yeah, I think that's a great question. All I have is hearsay at this point. I've tried to look for documents that basically identified why that particular timeframe was changed. I haven't found anything that I can say with, with accuracy was like, this is totally the reason. What I have heard is that six months was discussed because of trying to get more people to run for the office. But that's, yeah, that's, that's only what I've heard.
At a time when there maybe were less interested people, or there was no one in the role, or something like?
That's kind of what I've heard, yeah. But, but nothing definitive, unfortunately, so.
I think, I think two years sounds too long to me. One year is better. That's just my thoughts.
Well, I would agree with you. Just let's be specific as to what that one-year date. Well, I would agree with you, just let's be specific as to what that one-year date is, is it?
What's the anchor date?
Is it election date?
Well, when I've asked county council about this, not the current county council, but prior county council, it's one day from, when you, it's the time until you're sworn in.
Yeah.
So it's one year.
Okay.
From the beginning, the term of office.
Yes, okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
I'm okay with that.
That would put us more consistent with what the city of Portland has in its charter as well as Metro. Right now, Multnomah County has the requirement at eighteen months, which is, is very similar. It's basically before you get sworn into the office, so.
Yeah, Multnomah County has, have they moved their auditor to ranked choice voting in the November election like they moved their board?
I believe so. I, I think, yeah, I think everything has been, so, yeah. I'm totally open to twelve months. I, I don't believe that six months is appropriate, but I'm totally comfortable with twelve, twelve months.
I can go with either. I mean, I see, I see the benefit of having it aligned with some of the others, but I, as Commissioner Priest pointed out, there may be reasons why it's, you know, it's not necessary, so I can live with one year.
Okay, and the last thing I'm proposing is, the last revision is to add the requirement that performance audits done by the county auditor's office be done according to government auditing standards. That is essentially what this lovely book is, which is actually very well used if you were to look inside the pages and everything, so.
And is that the standard by which your audit accreditation?
Yes, yes. So, so my off, the Washington County Auditor's Office has been around as an elected office for about over forty years, forty-five years. Last spring, I'm very proud to let you know, and I think you already do know, that we passed our very first audit of the auditor. So I was incredibly pleased with that and that was according to these standards. The, the interesting thing about that audit of the auditor is one of the findings we, in that, is that there wasn't a requirement in the charter that we actually audit according to these government auditing standards. It's something where our external financial auditors audit according to these standards, Secretary of State's office, they do all their performance audits according to the auditing standards as well as their financial audits. And the other elected auditors in the region do them according to these standards. My concern about not having them in these sta, not having these standards in the charter is that from each elected auditor to elected auditor, you, that particular auditor could choose different standards. There are some other standards as there, they're more focused on the private sector or they just could just decide not to have standards, which I think is really inappropriate. So what I'm hoping to do is by adding this is to have some consistency in the office from elected auditor to elected auditor, so though it doesn't matter who the incumbent is in the office, there's consistency for the public in terms of the expectations as well as the county organization.
Seems like it's basic stuff, like I'm flabbergasted that it wasn't advised to him too when I read that. That doesn't sound right.
So that's it, essentially. Those are my three proposals. I would love to hear your questions. Really appreciated being able to talk with each of you about these and, yeah, let me know what, what you're thinking. I'm, I'm hopeful that it's a thumbs up to bring this back to the board, but let me know.
Does county council have any concerns or feedback on any of this? No, and, and the auditor and I have met a couple of times on this in advance of this.
When terms of next steps, it would come to us for the ballot title and the ballot statements. We have to go through that process for the, having a public hearing and go from there.
Right, under, under section fifty-one, you need to introduce the, wait twenty days of public hearing and then forward. We've talked about the time compression associated with the May election and the need to, if this is to get on the ballot, find that.
Yeah.
Do this early in the year. Is that what we're aiming for, May ballot? I'm supportive of that.
Thank you. Okay.
With the twelve months, yeah.
Okay, with the, with the adjustment of the twelve, two years back over to twelve months, okay. Okay, well, I really appreciate your support in this. I think this will make some really great changes for the, the office and I'm particularly excited about having this be a mandatory if the voters so choose, so.
And I, I want to say thank you for, for taking this seriously and reviewing this and keep, keeping us current with what's best practice. So thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, well, next move on to our last agenda topic, board and leadership communication. Why don't we do leadership first?
Good afternoon, Chair and Board of Commissioners. First, I'll start on Election Day with an elections update. As of earlier today, a hundred and eight thousand six hundred and thirty-six voters had cast their ballots for the current election. That's about twenty-seven percent of all registered voters. As a reminder, completed ballots must be postmarked today, November fourth, or turned in at one of the county's twenty-one official ballot drop sites by eight P M. tonight. Mailed ballots received after November eleventh will not be accepted regardless of the postmark date. Voters can get more information by visiting washcovotes.org or by calling five zero three eight four six five eight zero zero. Unofficial election results will be posted just after eight P M. tonight, followed by updates every two hours until midnight. From there, unofficial results will be posted each Friday afternoon until the election is certified on December first. Thank you Chair for listing up the thank you statements to voters in your email inbox and just want to reiterate, I know the Chair already mentioned, but please get any comments back to Philip Bransford by the close of, of Business Day. Mr. Bransford plans to post on the county's website and social media feeds an adjusted version of one of the draft's statements depending on tonight's results. Media releases, at your last, I was going to say work session, but actually it was just this last Thursday at Roundtable, we heard your interest and desire in receiving all media releases sent by county departments. Last week, each board member and staff assistant was added to the county's main email list for receiving email releases. Because we don't have a centralized system for managing media releases, some departments maintain their own media, media list. We've asked these departments to add your board's email addresses to their list as well. So hopefully you should be in the future seeing all media releases. And this concludes my update.
Yet another reason why we need more centralized comms. Okay.
We should apply that principle to Clean Water Services too, if we're not.
Yep. Well, we should be sure to raise no Friday.
Chair, just very shortly for you and the other Commissioners, I did have the opportunity to tour the Beaverton Cat yesterday with Mr. Steyer and some other members of the C E O's office. Received a great tour from Kristen Burke and so thanking her and to Mira and Marnie for their H S S team. It's a really cool facility over there. And apologies to Tanya and the rest of the team for all the questions I asked during the tour.
He was, he was really acting like a stellar county council.
All I have for you today.
That's great. Mr. Shanley, Clean Water Services.
Good afternoon. Last night, Joe Goll and I delivered our second State of the Partnership presentation to the City of Cornelius. Thanks to Director Willie for attending and since Joe's in the room, I, I just want to say he's done a great job with these so far. Clearly, the council and mayors have a lot of faith in Joe and there's great relationships there. And so he's been doing the heavy lifting. I'm just there to smile and answer questions if I can. We have another presentation tonight with the City of Sherwood.
Well, and give yourself credit. It's important for not only the full city council, but members of the community to see your face as the interim CEO, general manager.
Well, thank you for that. Yeah, they have all been very welcoming and it's been great to get to meet everybody face to face. C W A C, November twenty-fifth, on November twelfth, our last C W A C meeting. We'll present.
Year or ever?
Year, for the year.
Sorry.
We'll present a version of the permit and the long-term regulatory compliance presentation that the board received in October and an intro on design and construction standards that we'll be discussing with the board on this Friday. Our last item, I'd ask Kathy to come and present a little bit. We, as part of the leadership announcements, we attached the investment portfolio update, so she's going to hit the high points there and then be available if there's any questions.
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the board. Kathy Leader, Chief Finance Officer with Clean Water Services. So you, in your packet, you have our quarterly investment policy for July first through September thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. In there is a staff summary with a report from the G P R Government Portfolio Advisors that does our investments for us and our investment policy. Just really quickly, when you see in there, for that quarter, we have been in compliance with all our holdings for investments. The pool has stayed steady at four point six on returns and our core investments at three, increased from three point six three to three point seven five in that term. Just for an update, we do post now that policy on our website under documents, so it is available there now for you to view. And we will be bringing an update to the policy like we do every year annually at the December second board session. That concludes my report.
Can I ask you a favor? Can you send me an email? This isn't on the investment policy, it's on finance in general.
Okay.
I know through our lead-in to the budget and so forth that you had plans to refinance, I think it was refinance to build America bonds. You just send me an email on the status of that because I frankly, I know you've told me recently, but I can't seem to make it stick.
Yep, definitely will. I can do that for you.
That'd be awesome. Thank you. I appreciate having the opportunity to look at this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, now over to board members. Who would like to go first? I can go first. First of all, I'd just like to make a shout out to all the staff for the annual housing forum. That was really well done and I appreciated all of the speakers and the, the, the Q and A. I thought it was very good, so thank you for that. Mine's pretty short today. Yesterday, I really enjoyed going to the first meeting of the biotech caucus that Rep. Hypham pulled together. It was down at Aranara, which is a biotech firm that is working on creating a blood thinner that is also doesn't, allows for appropriate clotting, not inappropriate clotting. So it works both ways. It was, it was really interesting to see a lab setup similar to what we see at Clean Water Services right in downtown Portland. So they've built, they built up. The other quick note is that there are nearly two thousand biotech companies in Oregon right now. And the pitch was that every biotech company belongs in every conversation about manufacturing because in fact, that's what they're doing. So, and I was, last night I attended the Central Cultural Emergency Meeting. I appreciated the opportunity to be there tomorrow. I'll be speaking at the Fourth Annual Westside Small Business and Workforce Open House and thank you Adrian Chle for the talking points. And I'm looking forward to our roundtable on Thursday. Like it or not, we're going to be in board meetings all day Tuesday, all day Thursday, and all day Friday.
Yep.
So you're not looking forward to Fridays, just Thursday?
Well, that was, I, I'm sure you took my joke.
So I'm sorry, Rick.
Yeah.
I'm looking forward to this.
It's a long way for a travel. Did I say something wrong again?
No, it was me.
No, it was her.
She's looking forward to Thursday, but not Friday.
We'll bring good snacks.
Now, I'd like to revise my. Okay, who's next?
I can go real quickly. Last Wednesday, I had a meeting with a group of concerned Tigerd community members about houselessness and the impacts, just tried to help give them some suggestions about how to interact with city government and they were just asking for my advice. Attended the annual housing forum, which I thought went really well and I won't belabor that, but I appreciate all the staff team organization around that. On Friday, I met with Tim Dooley from A O C. He's the Public Safety advocacy person and I am going to be participating in some of that work a little bit more actively or actively at all. And then Friday, I also met with Lucy Hamer and Alicia Sojourner regarding the future plans for what acre work might look like in the future. And yesterday, Kevin Barton, D A., myself and our community corrections director, all along, forgetting one other person, the Family Justice Center director, all conducted interviews for future seating on the Public Safety Coordinating Council. So those recommendations will be coming. We had a very robust both process, interview process and then vetting and, and decision-making, so that recommendation will be coming soon, I'm sure. And then I really appreciated the Central Cultural Event last evening and just li, being able to listen, learn, continue to be informed about what is exactly going on in our community. And I just really appreciated even the invitation for that. And then I'm looking forward to both Thursday and our roundtable, Clean Water Services work session.
Bye.
You're gonna have to live with.
Oh, man, now I have to bring treats for Clean. Oh, just wait, I haven't done yet.
Go ahead, Defisa.
Okay, I'll go. Well, I'm, I too am looking forward to Thursday. I'll highlight one thing from calendar last week. I did enjoy the housing forum. Toodles and good job to the staff and everyone who attended. And then this week, I really enjoyed the meeting we went last night, all of us, and I heard there was seventy people? Do you think that was the head phone?
Probably at least fifty.
That was, that was a good turnout and I think we took some actions today, so well-rounded. And then this week, we've got a full couple of days ahead. Really like that.
You done?
Yes.
All right, speeding, dating there. I don't, last Wednesday, I had an opportunity to meet with an H O A. that was having had some construction issues and complexities and in the process had been working with Clean Water Services. And I just wanted to give a shout out to Rick and the team that worked with them. They had really good comments to say about them. They still have some problems with, with the project and they're working with two of the Clean Water Service staff, their consultant did not help them. And so C W S's staff is going to help them work through that. So I, it's just, it was good to meet with a constituent that had a legitimate issue, but had great things to say about Clean Water Services. So it's always, always like to promote that because we don't usually hear that very often. Not because it doesn't happen, but because we don't hear the good stuff. We only hear the bad stuff.
What part of the county did this occur in?
This was Cedar Hills.
Okay.
Your district. They called in the A Team.
Wow.
Anyway.
Must have been on a Friday.
Anyway, I also.
Okay, it's my district too.
Chair, better move along quickly.
Good comments about the county's annual housing forum. That was well-attended and just good information, good panel. And it's always good to hear that kind of information about what's going on and where we're going with all of that. Friday, I got updated with Metro staff on some S H S reforms and actions and I will, I'll review my notes and let you all know. I didn't see, hear anything new there, just a movement forward and more conversation with Metro councilors.
Once you figure it out, maybe you can tell us what is moving forward.
Yeah, I, I would, well, it's, it's nothing new, but it is some of the same stuff.
Okay.
I refined a little bit. Yeah, I was at Forest Grove City Council. When was that, Rick? Monday night? What is this? This is Tuesday night. It must have been last week. I don't know. Anyway, I was. I don't know. Anyway, I was at Forest Cove City Council with Clean Water Services. They did a great job. And then again, last night, the Cornelius City Council, in which case I also presented my, and my quarterly update to the city council. It was a good conversation. They were very appreciative of our emergency resolutions and orders. Tomorrow, I'll be at the Fourth Annual Westside Small Business, where you are speaking. So yeah, I'll be in that. I don't know if I'll be in for the duration, but I'll be there for a while. Then I have a check-in with the auditor, Salmonberry Trail Foundation meeting. And of course, Thursday and Friday, Thursday night is Deanna Palm's retirement party. So we'll be attending that as well. That's all.
I'll go last. I'm having the same experience this week that I had last week in being really tired. So I really enjoyed the housing forum last Thursday, but I think my doing the Community Cares Award was a little slow. So, which tells me if I'm going to look forward to our all-day meetings Thursday and Friday, I better caffeinate more highly or do something different. Commissioner Treese and I met with three folks from the Oak Hills community Friday afternoon. Heard a little bit of feedback on that earlier today. Attend, I attended the SHS Oversight Committee meeting, much of it yesterday from 9:30 to 12, where they're receiving the three county annual reports on year four and are going to be working through all that information on their Oversight Committee annual report for year four. And we already talked about our meetings Thursday and Friday. So that's it from me. I don't go into lengths about internal briefings, just the external stuff. So that's it from me, unless there's anything else. Thank you, everybody. Our work session of today is now adjourned.